States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you join me in a moment of silence for our men and women in uniform? Thank you. Call the meeting to order a minute after six. Keith, you want to talk about the truck under the adjustments to the agenda? Tell us about the motor.
If you can.
Yep, please. Right now.
Right now.
Yep.
Absolutely. All right, so I was hoping Earl was going to be here, but not a big deal. We have a 2012 International six-wheel dump truck and unfortunately we lost the motor in. The vet come to find out that we've had some issues since I've seen it in operation with it needing to regen with the new engines, the DAF fluid. So, they both got carboned up, number three cylinder, the valve seat let go and let the valve drop and hit the piston. So, that number three piston, so motor's gone, piston's gone. So, my request or my recommendation would be that the truck is currently over at Sparky's garage. We are pursuing any kind of information in regards to a potential warranty replacement, but truck's seven years old. We outside of our standard warranty, but I'd like to get the ball rolling and authorize or request that Sparky can get a motor coming, a new motor coming, rather than rebuilding. Rebuilding's maybe about the same cost, about forty grand. So, we have options in regards to how we look at that money, whether it's a request from reserve account or the utilized money we have in our current operating system or operating budget, excuse me. I personally think that the new warranty, excuse me, new motor's the way to go. The fact that you're going to gain a warranty with that motor that comes in, in the rebuilt motor, you're not going to get a warranty at all. And my hopes with that new motor in place and that truck running, that we're going to gain an additional eight to ten years for that truck in the retrospect of replacing it in two years if had the motor been state complete as it's current.
Questions from the board? Ethan, you got anything?
I would assume if there was any better option, he probably would have put it before us.
Yep. Yep, anything?
If, so if you take it out of your operating budget, you don't need a motion from the board, correct?
Rest, I would just use...
Didn't you make the statement earlier that if you took it out of there, you would feel you would be short as the...
There's potentially, I'd be short, so it's going to limit my, any kind of expense after the fact. It's going to limit. So, I mean, I'm going to come back at the end of the day, we're going to potentially be, could overdrawn a couple lines, but the budget may allow us, our operating budget may allow us to stay within our total budget for that department and not overspend anything. We might overspend a couple lines, but we're down in mechanics, so there's a surplus in that line, in that wages line in the overall budget. There's potential there that the lines will definitely be exhausted or overspent, but I would say overall budget probably will not be. But then again, another truck could have a...
Winter just broke.
Correct. You could have other major mechanical issues with other trucks that I anticipated to have on, not this one.
Right.
If at the end of the year, we could overdraw his whole budget, then we could make a transfer from the reserve fund to cover that engine or portion of it. So, I think we're going to be okay.
Okay. Yeah, where you had the reserve funds earmarked for something else, it'd be nice if they could...
Correct, for an additional truck. The plan was through this next budget, request more money, get a truck, replacement truck coming, a new truck we anticipated for the next year. So, order one come July, order a new truck, and then have that ready for the following winter. This is the goal. That reserve account had roughly eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars from this morning, what we were playing with for numbers. And I said, a new, a new truck is right around two hundred thousand dollars.
All right.
Any other questions? Yep. Right, take it out of your budget and we'll deal with it after.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. You good with that, John?
Yeah.
Good. Any other adjustments to the agenda, John?
No, I, we have a board committee manager on a consent...
Yep.
I have a recommendation for...
Okay. Let's do the presentation next and then we'll go to the minutes. What was yours? Where are you? Hey, Charlie.
Hi. How are you? Good, thank you. Thanks very much for hosting us. So, for those that don't know, I am Charlie Woodworth, Greater Franklin Development. We're the Economic Community Development Office for the county, and we're down in Farmington. We have undertaken a broadband study. Our consultant, Brian Lippold, is here, and together, mostly he will walk us through where we are. But what we wanted to do was just, we've been at this since January thirty-first, twenty eighteen. We unveiled our broadband plan for the county. Everybody in the county participated in this and contributed, you know, from all the plantations around Rangelley, the town of Rangelley, the twenty-two towns, sorry, the remaining towns, adding up to twenty-two towns in the county, plus Little More Falls, and the UTs contributed to this plan. So, just want to give you an update of where we are and review what our, what our options are, what the costs are for us to consider on a town-by-town basis, and what our options are going forward. So, Brian, take it away.
All right. Well, thank you. So, sorry, my back is to most of you, but I thought what we would do is just review the study and the timeline, just to refresh everyone's memory. We're not going to spend a whole lot of time on that. Review the uncabled areas of each of the four communities. Look over the GWI, refresh your memory as to GWI's plan for these communities. Talk about the Matrix proposal. Discuss a little bit of a regional governance model for this going forward. Talk about funding opportunities that are coming up, and we recommend the next steps. So, Charlie, you just covered, I think, most of these items. The goal that we've been working toward is to either expand the cable TV systems that are already in place or deploy fiber-to-the-home networks. That's sort of a aspirational goal. Whether that's achieved or not remains to be seen. And this is intended to be a public-private partnership type of a strategy, so where service providers are participating, the communities are participating, and the state is participating. So, as a result of that study, we attracted two providers, this isn't working for me. We attracted two providers to come in and give us a proposal. One was GWI, which some of you may have heard of, and the other was Matrix, which has not yet provided any service here in Maine. So, reviewing the timeline a little bit, we published a report in January. In May of two thousand eighteen, Matrix submitted their proposal and I think came to talk to this body. GWI in September of two thousand eighteen submitted their first USDA loan application, which was for Farmington, New Sharon, Chesterville, I believe. In July of two thousand nineteen, we secured funding to accelerate this effort. So, that funding came from the county TIF, Maine Community Foundation, Connect Maine Authority, and then Greater Franklin was providing some in-kind services. In August of this last year, Beeline Cable agreed to provide costs to extend their network. We're still waiting. And in September, GWI submitted loan applications to the USDA to cover Rangelley, Rangelley Plantation, and Dallas Plantation, as well as a portion of all of the communities along the Route Four corridor. In September, TDS...
When you say a portion of all the communities on the corridor, extending from where to where?
So, extending from...
So, Farmington to here, build out up in Rangelley and the plantations, but picking up Strong Avon Phillips mile wide. So, basically the downtown main streets in those towns.
So, I assume the same thing for Sandy River as well?
Right.
Yeah.
So, essentially, they have to build fiber from the south up to the north, and they'll opportunistically serve those potential subscribers along the way.
Are they going to tap into the existing fiber optic line that's there now?
Yes. Yeah, that would be their intent. TDS, for those areas that they provide service, they've agreed to give us pricing to roll out fiber to the home for their communities. We're still waiting. And then in October, we worked with Matrix to revise their proposal. Their original proposal, I think, was ten or twelve communities. We've increased it to nineteen towns or townships within the county, under the same terms and conditions. In October, Charter agreed to provide costs for those communities that they serve to extend out. We're still waiting on that pricing. And so, now, what we're doing is we're going around a meeting with the different groups of communities. In this case, it's Rangelley, Rangelley Plantation, Dallas Plantation, and Sandy River, all together to serve a hundred percent of the potential subscribers. The reason we grouped them together is it makes sense from a networking standpoint and from a scale standpoint to make it worthwhile for Matrix to make that investment. And then in March of this year, there's a number of funding deadlines. The USDA has their funding deadline, March fifteenth. Connect Maine is going to be opening rounds in March and May. And the Northern Board of Regional Commission, we believe, will have an application due in May as well. So, there's a lot of opportunity there, should you decide to move forward with something to pursue funding from outside the community. So, looking at these four communities in red, those are all of the roadways that we would get built out as part of the Matrix proposal or any other provider that we would be negotiating with. I should mention, we just reached out to Consolidated to ask them to give us pricing for a fiber-to-the-home network for these four communities as well. The interesting thing about the Consolidated concept, which they've done in a number of communities in New Hampshire, is they provide a portion of the funding. In Chesterfield, New Hampshire, they provided sixty percent of the funding, and the town had to come up with the remaining forty percent, which they bonded for. And then Consolidated recover, or for the debt service on that bond, Consolidated adds a ten-dollar infrastructure fee to the subscriber's invoice on a monthly basis, and that goes to paying off the bond. If there's not enough subscribers to generate the entire debt service, Consolidated guarantees the bond. So, in other words, there's no risk to the towns. Essentially, what Consolidated is doing is using the town's bonding capacity at a low interest rate to help fund the deployment. Now, they have a number of different criteria before they'll pursue that in a town. They haven't shared those criteria with us, except for there is one that they don't want to do this in an area that already has a cable TV system. So, these communities would be ideal for them, and we believe are, is of sufficient scale to make it worthwhile. So, we'll wait, we'll see what they can do. So, Charlie, if you want to run through these next ones, this is, comes out of the study that we did two years ago. So, essentially, these are the roadways that would get built out in each of the four communities. And I don't know if there's any question, the black lines are roads that would not be built, because we determined that there wasn't either commercial power or any potential subscribers along those roadways.
Okay, back that one up, please. There's some other folks here from Mersey Plantation. Does that agree with your thought process about your area? I'm assuming you're here to pay attention to this, right?
The first part of Berchtesh Beach Road, there's no power, I don't know, nothing on that. That's the only error I can see right now.
Yeah, forgive me, I couldn't tell you what that, where that goes at. Where's that?
Oh, it's on the Berchtesh Beach Road.
Whereabouts on the map?
Where it starts.
I'm from away.
Tell them where it is.
I can't figure out where I'm at, Steve. I mean, I know where that road is, but I can't figure out where I'm at.
You didn't know you were going to be presented.
No, I shouldn't have brought my lights on. Right here's the best people. Oh, when it comes in off John Langos, we get that, there's not some power. I guess I wouldn't relate that, because there's no buildings around that.
Yeah, this, before they would actually build something, they'd go out in the field and do the engineering, discover those inconsistencies. I believe that, just as you pointed out, in many of these communities, the roadway network is overstated, that we could actually pull that back a little bit further, which would improve the financial metrics.
Anyone from Dallas?
Nope.
Sandy River?
Nope.
Okay.
All right. So, to refresh everyone's memory, GWI, this, everyone knows who GWI is. They're a, an internet service provider based out of Dennyford, has been around for probably twenty years. They provide service in many areas of the state, and they're starting to deploy fiber-to-the-home networks in many areas. They operate the fiber-to-the-home network on the island of Islesboro, and they're working with a lot of other communities to deploy fiber to the home. So, in September, they submitted for Farmington, New Sharon, Chesterville, and we're still waiting on this decision from the USDA. So, that's been sixteen months that we're waiting. If they get that loan application, there's no cost to the town. They're going to deploy, and it's a private network. Their second application was for Rangelley, Rangelley Plantation, Dallas, in the Route Four corridor that we talked about. That went in September of two thousand nineteen. So, if the USDA takes as long as they are taking with the first application, you're not going to know until sometime, probably in twenty twenty-one, whether or not they're going to get a approval for here. We don't know that. We're guessing at this point, and everyone's still waiting to see.
Can I interrupt? Folks, if you want to ask a question, please, just let's get them out here.
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, make this interactive.
So, my question is, GWI is facing this timeframe constraint with USDA. Are other companies finding the same problem?
We've been watching it across the country, and every couple of weeks, the USDA announces for a different state. What is taking so long? We don't know. We don't know what feedback they have given GWI. We're just, we're in the dark. So, it seems like incredibly long time to approve an application.
Does GWI not want to tell you what the feedback is?
They're telling us that they're still waiting to hear from USDA. So, I don't know if they've heard something or what, so.
What's your timeframe, you collectively?
Our timeframe is your timeframe. I mean, you will hear, as we work through this, we've got funding opportunities coming up this spring. And it doesn't mean we need to commit to, to any of those, but we should be in a position to apply for them. And then, if we're successful, then we'll have a stronger case, one way or the other, on how we proceed.
What we're trying to do is reach that goal of getting everyone service, and that's not an overnight thing. It's going to take years. So, keep pursuing, and tell the towns, tell us, uncle, we're done, stop.
Who is your primary USDA RD contact that you work with in state?
GWI is the one that submitted the application.
Okay. I can find out.
We're dealing with Tim.
Tim, okay.
And then Shekina Bailey in Kansas City, who's their guru. Yes.
Okay.
He's the director, state director.
So, any other questions on the GWI plan? And because that is no cost to the local community, we've been sort of waiting on this. You know, that's your number one, from a cost standpoint, number one opportunity. So, Matrix Design Group is, has been in here to present to the select board. They're a engineering firm based out of New Jersey. They've built a lot of network in Vermont and New Hampshire. They do a lot of work for the big wireless players, AT&amp;T and Verizon and so forth. They appear to be a quality outfit, and they would like to build out in this community as well. But their plan is a little bit different. We're going to spend a few minutes walking through that, just to refresh everyone's memory. So, they're looking to build out across nineteen towns in Franklin County, and we, again, those nineteen towns, we've grouped together. So, you're, we're referring to your group as the Rangelley group of the four towns. They fund the construction. They maintain and operate the network. The town would fund the utility pole make-ready costs. So, if there's poles that need to be replaced, if there's existing attachments that need to be moved in those poles, that would be the responsibility of the town to fund that. And that can typically represent twenty to thirty percent of the cost of deploying a network. It's quite expensive. We use a number of four hundred dollars a pole. I think in this, in this, we used four fifty is what the capital cost is estimated to be for that work. And we're going to go through those numbers in more detail here later in the presentation. The town would also fund the annual pole license fee to rent those poles in perpetuity, and those fees typically run about twenty dollars a year per pole. So, that's quite expensive. And the town would have to provide the central office space and power, environmental conditioning and so forth. And then, once it's up and running, three years later, Matrix would allow the towns to buy the network back from them.
For a dollar?
Not yet.
But, not yet. But...
Eventually.
Over that, ensuing seventeen years, the price would decline every year, until in year twenty-one, the price would be ten dollars. So, it's not a dollar, but it would be lower cost. So, it's a way in which the towns, if they want to own their own infrastructure, it's a path to that point. It, you know, it's, it may or may not be a good deal in final analysis. I don't know that you really want to own your own network.
I was just going to ask what the benefit would be to own that infrastructure, because usually we get like tax money back on that if we don't own it.
That's a really good point. So, I don't know why you would want to own it personally. The biggest reason towns want to own their own infrastructure is that they're in control, and the box stops at John's desk or Steve's.
No, it won't stop at my desk. I won't advocate for that, bud, because you're going to have a maintenance staff that you're going to bring onboard.
Oh, yes.
Trucks to hold on your ass, that doesn't make any sense to me at all.
So, I'm, we're not here to endorse one or the other. We're here to advise.
Right.
And so, my advice would be, yeah, you really don't want to own your own network if you can avoid it. So, in year twenty is ten dollars. All right. So, the costs, we've estimated the miles of roadway in each community, the number of poles, assuming there's thirty poles per mile, and that varies depending on the density. The number of nine-one-one addresses in each community, which translates into the number of subscribers per mile. So, for these four towns, you would average twelve potential subscribers per mile. That's a key metric for Matrix, is they need to see at least ten and a half potential subscribers per mile before they'll consider a build-out. So, that fits comfortably within their model. And then, you also have to commit to six subscribers per mile would sign up for service initially. All right? So, there would be a pre-subscription period where the subscribers would have to say, yeah, I'm in, pay a fee, and once you get to, on average, six per mile, then the project would kick off, Matrix would build the network, and you would, you'd be good to go. Those subscribers could disconnect after the fact, and that's Matrix's risk, not yours. There would be two central offices required to support the four communities. We've just put a hundred thousand dollars in there per central office as a placeholder. So, the total capital cost, you can see by community, again, all four would have to go into this, would be two-point-seven million. And then I included what that means per subscriber and so forth. The annual pole license fees would amount to a hundred and twelve dollars. If you translated that into a subscriber fee to cover the annual pole license, assuming a minimum of six subscribers per mile, that would mean the pole licenses would cost eight dollars and thirty-three cents per subscriber per month. So, that would be your infrastructure fee potentially on top of that. And that capital cost doesn't include any insurance or legal expenses. So, any questions on that?
What's the average rate that the subscriber would pay based on...
We're going to get to that.
...type of service?
Questions?
All right. So, their criteria, minimum ten and a half potential subscribers per mile.
Is that on average?
On average.
We're going to send this to you.
An average of six per mile sign up. They have to commit to a twenty-four-month contract or pay a higher installation fee. And we're going to get into that in a second. And they assume all the ongoing operational risk, should the subscriber count fall below that six. that six. So the pricing, they offer a fifty, a hundred megabit. And if you want faster than a hundred megabit, that's a pricing to be determined. Their price for fifty meg is ninety-five and a hundred is a hundred and thirty-five per month. The installation fee is four hundred dollars, a one-time install fee. If you sign, if you sign up during that pre-subscription period, if you come in after the fact, it's fifteen hundred dollars a month. Or, I'm sorry, fifteen hundred dollar one-time installation fee.
That, that moves all the equipment inside your home and all that stuff?
Correct. And the drop to your home and so forth. There's a battery backup price and some other option. Phone service is twenty, voicemail, Wi-Fi. It sounds expensive. And they compare it to what you're paying today for a lower speed DSL service perhaps, or satellite internet, plus your satellite TV service. So with this, you could stream, lower your video costs. And all in, when you look at voice, data, video, even with these higher prices, overall, you wouldn't be spending more than what you're paying today.
So this includes television as well?
No. It includes a data line where you can stream YouTube video or any number of different streaming services that would take the place of a cable TV package or a satellite TV package. So the, the buyout costs, I illustrated through year ten and then in year twenty-one, it's essentially, it reduces per year by a set fee until you get down to the ten dollars. So in year four, it would cost you seven million, in year ten, it would cost you four and a half million. So whether you, you, if you wait on G W I to see if that's gonna work, really don't have to do anything. If you want to pursue a Matrix opportunity while you're waiting on the G W I, then we recommend that you establish a broadband utility district, which would essentially take those four communities and for the purposes of this project, put them under a single umbrella. And with that, then you would have bonding authority, you could pursue grants and so forth as a single entity as opposed to four different communities. And you would get the benefit of that shared resource and purchasing power. A broadband utility district is what Baileyville and Callis have done for their network. Millinocket, East Millinocket and Medway have done it. And it's just a, it's a clean way to pursue this if you're going to combine with adjacent towns. And there's really no cost to setting that up. Yes, sir.
So is Consolidated actively putting a presentation together that I give to you?
We've asked them to. They haven't responded yet, but we anticipate that they will.
How long ago did you ask them?
Two days ago.
So how did you know about their funding formula where?
I've been following what they're doing.
Okay. And you'd expect it to be similar?
If, if, again, they haven't provided their, their investment criteria to us. So we're guessing at this point that this will fit the model. We don't know.
Thank you.
Consolidated owns the fiber optic line from Farmington on up through, don't they? Fairpoint put it in and Consolidated purchase them. My assumption is that.
Yes. And I, TDS is in the mix there as well, and I, I don't know what the.
So it's consolidated. Thank you.
I, I mean, just from observing over the last few years, all these pushing with Consolidated, they, they put their fiber network is greater in Rangeley than it was three years ago. So it's down, the beam is tracked now, and it's down, it's different locations around Rangeley, and the speeds have improved. When you call Consolidated, you can get up to a hundred, a hundred, depends on where you are, fifty-fifty, there's different options. But they don't do fiber to the home for an individual. They would only do fiber to a home for a business. So we could push them into the offering of fiber to the home scenario. Because the fiber goes by a lot of people's homes and a lot of people don't get.
Don't, don't mistake that fiber that's out there as usable for fiber in the home. They would build new fiber.
Well, this is new fiber.
No, it would be new fiber again, over top of that new fiber.
Okay.
That fiber that they put out there is not designed for fiber in the home service. It doesn't have enough fiber count in the cable. It, it, so they will be, they would be overbuilding even that new investment.
Okay. That's good to know.
So there's various sources of funding, and we'll go through these five different sources if you want to go to the next slide. So the USDA, just like what G W I is pursuing, the next round of applications is due March There's two hundred million available in what they call a reconnect grant, which is just a full grant, there's no loan component. But it's only those areas that have service of less than ten over one is eligible. So some of your areas would be eligible under that, to have a grant. They have a fifty-fifty loan grant and then a hundred percent loan that'll be coming due. What we would suggest is for, if you were going to pursue it, like with Matrix, you would pursue the reconnect for those areas that are below ten over one. And the rest of it probably wouldn't be worth pursuing. Connect Maine, eighty percent of the proposed funding area must not have existing service of less than twenty-five over three. So much greater area would be eligible for Connect Maine. So you could stack that with USDA and get both potentially to acquire more funds. But they only have a million to a million and a half available for this year unless the governor and the legislature are successful in raising additional funds this next session, which we've been saying that for years. So, but it's a higher likelihood this year than it was last. There's also planning grant dollars available coming in March and May. So that's, that's another source of funding.
And this one and a half, one to one and a half is specific to Maine. Whereas if you go back to USDA, those two hundred million dollars, that's nationwide. So we're competing in a much larger.
And you've already gotten two grants from the Connect Maine Authority to fund all of this planning and negotiating effort. And they'll likely continue to help support that initiative so that the county can reach its goals. Northern Board of Regional Commission, over the last seven, eight years, there were thirty-four awards totaling eight billion dollars. Heather Johnson, the head of D C D, is on that board. And we believe there's a high likelihood that you would get funding through that effort if you chose to. But I think that, is that up to five hundred thousand?
The cap is five hundred. So what's realistic could be anywhere from two and a half to, to five hundred, two hundred and fifty to five hundred. But we need scale, and it would have to be four communities together, not, not just one of the, of these four, you know, to catch their attention.
And then just from a planning grant perspective, the Maine Community Foundation, which is funded once or twice?
Once for this, our current negotiation.
They're essentially asking us to submit again because they'd like to get more money. So that's another opportunity for, not big dollars, but it all goes towards continued. And then we took a look at the municipal tax commitment, which we tried to do for all of the towns that we're looking at to see what is the local capacity for funding. And so this is from two thousand seventeen, was the most recent data that I have from the state. And we looked at, if you were to increase the mill rate by one mill, what would that generate? Across those four communities, it would generate just shy of a million dollars a year. That's what the Island of Islesborough did. And initially, it was a one mill, I think it's one point four mill currently that they use to, to service their bond debt, to subsidize the ongoing operation and to reduce the service pricing so that it's affordable for everyone. On Islesborough, they priced their service at three hundred and sixty dollars per year for a full gigabit of service. So it's thirty dollars a month is what it amounts to. That's, that's the approach that they took. So the, the concept here is if you are going to pursue something that is going to cost the community something, then you pursue federal dollars, you pursue state dollars. And there's also an expectation that local dollars would be contributed as well in one form or another, whether it's donations or tax increase or what have you.
So you just were showing the mill rate for the each individual town. That was for like one year?
That was for the year of two thousand seventeen.
Okay. And that would have been, the reason we would raise that, would that cover the whole project for its entirety, or is that a commitment that we'd be taking to?
I was just, what I wanted to see is what was the capacity? So I'm, we're not saying that you would have to go full mill.
What would be the reason that we would be raising that money? Like what in specific?
To service the bond debt.
Okay. On which plan?
Like the Matrix proposal.
Okay.
Or if there's a bond required for the Consolidated proposal, you're going to need to service that, you know, pay off the principal and interest on that bond over a twenty-year period set up.
Okay. So you're just saying if we needed a million dollars for any particular project, that's about what it would look like for town?
Yeah.
As photoshoot captured.
It's just an illustration. It's not tied to a specific proposal. But it was really looking to see what is the capacity of the community within, within reasonableness. And I'm not saying one mill is reasonable, I'm just, every community is different. So the next steps, what we think you ought to do, while you're waiting on G W I and the USDA, if you think you want to pursue something, then the first step is get your broadband utility district established. There's probably some minimal legal fees to doing that, but it's wouldn't be significant. It may or may not require a town vote to participate in a broadband utility district. I don't know. And then start negotiating with Matrix to improve the deal, if possible, and then go through the process. And ideally, somewhere in that process, you're gonna hear from the USDA whether or not G W I has been successful with their application.
Has G W I put together a projected budget of subscriber costs at this point?
I, I'm trying to remember. I thought what they said, it would be the same price as they offer statewide for other fiber in the home networks, so, but I, I don't have the specifics.
And they understand the prices that they charge in Southern Maine or Coastal Maine would be different than here if they wanted to have the take rate, a realistic take rate. So it's price, price sensitivity, yes.
Price, I, I think the price for them was gonna be lower than what Matrix is proposing.
They didn't give it to us in writing, but it was in conversation. You know, we were all, it was top of mind, did.
You have a question or comment? Yes, Boba.
There's no wireless option?
Like what Dave provides?
I don't know.
We did talk with Red Zone Wireless, which is the principal or the largest wireless provider in the state. We asked them to tell us what would be involved for them to provide a wireless solution, and they have declined to do that. So there really is no wireless option, other than what, what Dave's company is offering. Yes, sir.
Did, did I understand you correctly that you spoke with Consolidated for the first time just a few days ago?
We, we formally asked them to submit a proposal to us. We talked to them all, I talked to them all the time. And we've been, I've been trying to get them to take a look at all of Franklin County. But once we understood one of their requirements was no cable TV competitor, then we said, all right, let's carve out these four, give us a, a cost on that.
How about Tilson Technologies?
They're not a service provider, and they do engineer networks.
Yep.
But they have not shown a great deal of interest in some of these smaller projects. They're really operating on a national basis now.
Yeah, they've gotten big. I thought you were curious.
And working with, you know, much larger cities and the big wireless providers and so forth, so.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You know where to find us. Next up.
We've got a quarterly meeting, I think, we're trying to schedule, so maybe this is something that could be on the agenda for the quarterly meeting with the plantations.
Good. Thank you. Next up, motion to approve the minutes, please, for December sixteenth.
Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for the board of selectmen Monday, December sixteenth, twenty nineteen, with any corrections or, any corrections?
Who? I need a second. Need a second before we can move forward?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Number twelve showed a vote of four to zero, I believe it was three to one.
Where are you?
In the executive session. Me.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All those in favor? You've got to abstain?
I'll abstain.
Three, three, four of them want to abstain.
Mr. Chair, I haven't seen that document. Did Ethan say you voted in the executive session?
No, we didn't vote in the executive session. It was after the executive session when we came out.
The bullet, number twelve bullet, he wanted to know where.
I don't have that.
No, no, it's okay. He just wanted to know where to find it.
Right, okay.
That was my best way to direct him there.
That was my best way to direct him there.
Public to speak under non-agenda items. Okay, thank you. Hold on here. I haven't seen anything on the board. Nothing on the boards committee. All right, great. Thank you. Next is number six. We all set? I don't want to get ahead of you guys. All right. Thank you. Liquor license for Forks in the Air, the Ice Bar.
I'll make a motion to approve your request for extension of license on premises for Forks in the Air LLC. And this is for a date of February 15th through February 16th of 2020 for the Ice Bar.
Second. Karen, how come all of them aren't requesting for the entire winner?
Um, I'm not sure.
Just a recommendation for the future. You spend a lot of time setting this up. You should be able to use it whenever you feel like using it, is my point. I'm just, thought I'd throw it out there. Yep, all right. I mean, turn for this one. I mean, I, we're all in the same boat here, so you're doing one, I'm assuming.
But it's on our patio, so we don't need an additional.
No, there are some places where it already have, others have extensions on their property already in their liquor license application. So should be fine. Any other questions from the board? All in favor? Thank you. Event permit, Pond Hockey Festival.
I'll make a motion to approve the event permit application for the Rangeley Pond Hockey Festival to be held on Haley Pond from January 31st through February 2nd, 2020.
Second. Move and second. Questions? All in favor? Thank you for doing that, by the way. Yeah, absolutely. Next is the Rayvex Show.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the event permit application for Boss Power Equipment for the Rayvex Show for the date of 1/25/2020.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? That's it? All in favor? Next up is a question for appointments. We have Harry Simon for the Budget Committee.
I'll make a, I'll make a, a motion to accept the request for appointment for the Budget Committee from Harry Simon with a term to end of 6/30/2020.
Second. Any questions, comments? Thank you for applying. All in favor? Next up is Afton Thompson, Budget Committee. Hundred years of experience, I think I saw in here somewhere. I move we accept Afton's request to be on the Budget Committee.
Second.
All in favor? No opposed. Thank you, both of you, for. Airport manager. We voted last meeting to accept the resignation of Rebecca Carmichael. And I have been told that Mike Bacon, Chief Mike Bacon would like to fill the unexpired term. Got that correct? For the airport manager. I assume you're all set with that?
I would recommend that because I'm not here all week, every week, so I think it's important. Someone who's local has that position, might as well to try it for the unexpired term, which will expire June 30th.
Yep.
And then they'll have a chance to see how difficult they might be. So I think that's a good move at this point. If anybody else expresses interest.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the request for appointment from Chief Michael Bacon for airport manager to expire 6/30/20.
Second. Any questions? I would recommend that we start looking at an alternate. If somebody's out of town like Mike Bacon or whatnot, so somebody has access to keys and combinations to locks and things of that nature. And see that, you know. All in favor? Thank you. Sale of property. Our department has received an offer of $300 for the 88, 98 Yamaha Venture 700. We received no bids during the bid window, but did receive one bid late due to the holiday. The department is looking for guidance from the board on this matter. You want to accept the bid of 300 or you want to hold out for another 50 bucks?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid of 300 for the 98 Yamaha Venture 700.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. I don't have any correspondence. Anybody else? No? No? Go to old business. Second reading for Article 12 revision. I assume everybody's read it. Saw the changes. They did get a clarification from Ann Lee. This is still fine. I'm assuming you're all set with that?
I guess I'd just be curious as to what the, this, the school's budget operates from taxpayer funds. I mean, do they, do they view this as, is this something that they? They do? I mean, for it to come up out of the blue, um, just, that was, that was my, that was a question I had is if this is standard, common, I mean.
I mean, it basically offering a, um, an incentive to have a supposed, you know, and there's poses insurance policy and would save the town a lot, a lot of money. You know, the town of Mexico does that, the town of Rockford does that. They offer a different amount of money. A lot of towns do that.
Yep.
I can tell you that the school pays my, pays my weekly cost.
So you, you have insurance with, um?
With the, with the town. The school buys me out or essentially pays for my weekly share.
Because your wife's associated with the school.
Cause my wife works. So I apologize. Yeah.
Yep. That answer the question? We all set?
Yeah.
Any other points?
Not really. I think it's always been a good policy to have. We can certainly save some money. We've had a couple of weddings this year already, but I know we're gonna save money on at least one.
I need a motion to accept this and implement.
I'll make the motion to accept the amendment to personnel policy, Article 12.
I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion on it? All in favor? opposed? One opposed.
Looks like the tip is announced.
Yeah, I've lost it.
I think it's a little out of order. It's not good.
Did we have from the FAA that, I'll slip in here. Just forced account explanation?
It might be after.
Is this it?
I don't know. Good morning.
Yeah. Yeah, right after that.
Oh, there it is. Okay, here we go. Did he call you back today? No?
I called to see if they had reached any conclusion. I left a voicemail. He didn't come back. I imagine sometime this week. Get something. As he indicated in his email.
I'm surprised they didn't have a quick answer, but you know, whatever. I'm surprised they didn't have a quick answer, but that's, you know, they maybe were a little, little unique.
When I initially emailed him, I thought I attached your
Questions.
Email to me, and he says, hey, you didn't get it, so I put it in the mail. Make Harry Goddard, somebody who knows exactly what you want.
Yeah, that's, whenever.
Moving forward with that. Anything else on that, John? No? You all set here?
All set.
Next up, TIF information. We have in our presence Darrell.
Good evening.
Who's willing to answer any questions we have regarding TIF and how it applies. We have in front of you maps, information on how TIFs work, et cetera. Start off with questions from the board. Darrell is asking that Jensen Baird, Gardner and Henry with Alyssa Tibbetts was the front person. We accept her bid. We received another bid from Freddie Flaherty for similar money, a little bit higher. What's your thoughts? You want to have Darrell answer some questions? You want, are you comfortable with?
Yeah, just for Darrell to talk about his experience with, you know, and how long the process takes, you know, just.
I'd be happy to address that.
Go ahead.
Uh, just leading up to this was one of the key stone items in downtown action plan that was approved 11 months ago during year number one was to look at putting together the TIF district. So that we could start to accumulate some revenues in the years ahead. Keep the money local so we can use that towards a whole bunch of items for public private infrastructure and so forth. So doing that, we looked at a TIF legal consultant that would put together all of the financial matrix that shows the whole taxship formula with the school funding and the county funding, which is pretty complicated. And then with that goes a development plan, which lists some of the, the key items that the, the town's going to want to address for the infrastructure. So that could be everything from roads, sidewalks, facades to buildings on Main Street. A number of other infrastructure activities, sewer water could offset some indebtedness. You're allowed to do borrowing, so you can save, you can happen to pay any bond rates by keeping it locally and, and so forth. So a lot of those things are listed in there. It also alleviates some of the slum of blight issues where we have pockets of blighted areas within the range of the Aquasyc Downtown District. So with that, there are some other activities that are allowable besides the infrastructure, such as credit enhancement agreements. If somebody's going to come in and do a $2 million investment on a $100,000 piece of property, sometimes there's extra incentives to offset some of their costs once the work is done towards the, their development costs that they put into a project. And the town would be better off because then they would be collecting taxation even with a, call it tax break for a developer. Then if the, the project was just dormant, getting just the base tax on a underutilized building or property. Looking at the, the TIF language and how things are put together, you have to declare a boundary. So we had through the downtown, then you have the mansion in front of you, the, the downtown TIF district for Raisley Aquasyc. With that, that can be slightly adjusted, i.e. when you look at the red line, you think, wait, it's property on the left-hand side of the line. It's not here, you know. So those are some of the things through that process that you could adjust. And then with that, once we have the development plan, which is how we want to spend anticipated revenues over a 20 or 25-year period, for example, then we submit that to the state for approval. If you want to capture the original assessed value based on tax year April 1st of 2018 through March 31st of 2019, the Raisley Aquasyc value is roughly 74,837 and $300. That whole application process would have to be really fast-tracked to get all the paperwork in to Augusta DECD by March 31st. That's gotta be tight. If we wanted to defer Selectman and Town Manager's prerogative to have this approved at a June meeting rather than to have a special meeting, the taxable year, that would be April 1st, 2019 through March 31st, 2020. And the taxable value for that period right now is 74,741,500. Ironically, this tax year coming up, starting April 1st of 19 through March of 20, is $95,800 decrease in valuation from the prior year. This is overall with, based on all the property proposed in the TIF district. It's, uh, there's going to be always some fluctuation because you have depreciation. You have some folks that make improvements, whether it's the, the brew pub in, in Aquasyc or Sarge's or others around town that have done things to raise, but then you also have depreciation. So with all that, that's where we are. It's almost the same both years. So the question is getting approved for a TIF consultant to see if we could fast-track it for March. And, or either way, have a TIF consultant selected out of the three presented to you to have it done by June. It's your call. I've got the understanding from one of the TIF consultants that I recommended that she can get this done in time to capture the prior years. It, it's quite a valid process. I would be writing up a lot of the development plan, working through our Rangeley Region Economic, Raisley Region Economic Opportunity Committee. All of you, the local, you know, just trying to get a feel to get all these things done. There'd be a, a full process. You sort of have a sample that scares some people away. Was a draft scenario of that process where in January, Board of Selectmen set a date for a public TIF hearing. And then approve a warrant for whatever we would have a special time meeting sometime in March. It's gonna be too rushed to try to piggyback everything on the March 3rd date where they're having the whole border, whatever, going on, primary stuff. And so that's laid out, gives you a rough idea of how the process would work. So that gives us basically, we're one week into January, so we have three weeks plus four weeks in February. That's seven weeks plus three and a half. It's about 11, 11 and a half weeks if we want to try to crank it up. But we'd have to choose one of the consultants. I've worked with two out of the three.
Well, there's one other point you brought up that's important. If we're fast-tracking it, it requires a special time meeting.
Either way, it's, yeah, as opposed to just
Being ready for June.
Annual meeting, yeah.
Well, we already have a town meeting taking place.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So sometimes, and I've talked with the consultants about that either way, they're finding either way. That's one of the things to look at. For example, one of the projects that started some of their improvements, they still have to officially apply for a credit enhancement agreement. But you can't do a credit enhancement agreement until you have a TIF. Or you'd have to have a special TIF set for a major development as a site-specific TIF, not a, not a downtown TIF. The beauty of the downtown TIF that allows you a lot of flexibility. You don't have to claim the acreage as far as an acreage cap based on your total land mass for, for the towns. And it allows you to do some projects outside the downtown TIF district as well. If it's meaningful, such as construction, alteration, expansion, infrastructure, sewer water, electric, telephone, cable, broadband, natural gas, yada, yada, yada. If it's outside the district, it could still count if it's required due to some improvements that are happening within the downtown district. So there's some things that could be done for public safety as well, but there's a 50% cap. So what would happen? There would be a development plan put together with all the different topics of what, you know, whether it's roads, streetscapes, land acquisition, buildings across that depot street, for example. But the key is TIF finances are incremental. So the region we, the reason we have the 74 million and change base value, that's your starting point. So then what happens over the years? We just found out this last year depreciated slightly. So it's incentivized to give us this extra tool, the economic tool belt. So it's incentivized to give us this extra tool, the economic tool belt that says, hey, we're local developers, we're outside developers who want to come in and do this now that you have this TIF. It creates a buy-in. And so what happens usually is in year two and three, you start to see the evaluation, I'm sorry, the value go up. And then you capture a value, you keep it locally. If you didn't capture a value, the town would be penalized. Let's say you, there was a major investment happening, you went from seventy-four million to eighty-five million. All of a sudden, your county tax commitment's going to be bigger, your school tax funding is going to be bigger. But if you were able to shelter it here locally, then you get a value add for every TIF dollar that's protected here because you can use that for leverage for grants and other things. So usually there's anywhere from a three to eight to one return on having the TIF dollars stay locally. And if we don't do it, other communities, Farmington, they're gobbling up utilizing TIFs and is deferring their county share of taxes. Is that a little too much, too fast? Because that's sort of how the TIF formula works. So for moving ahead for the downtown TIF, we can still explore other TIFs too and always amend these. I would just recommend that perhaps you consider going with Alyssa Tibbetts. I've worked with her. I also work with Shanna Cook Mueller. She's probably the most respected in the state, but she also charges the most, as you saw. And I certainly understand loyalty when you have a law firm you've dealt with for 20-plus years in the town, working with them. I've worked with a lot of different TIF consultants through the years. I'm happy with whatever you decide to do to crank this up. I think it's an important next step because then the downtown activity's not just about cutesy thing, downtown starts to look better. But there's actually investment that's happening now, and more investment will happen in this work than every community I've been in. Sorry, I was talking fast.
Questions?
So the base, it's interesting, I was shocked to hear the base value for, you know, April 1, twenty-nine, April 1, 2018 through March 30, 2019
Yeah.
is comparable to
I can't believe that.
I, I just, I, I'm shocked because I, that was
Yeah, I was surprised.
Yeah.
Are we sure?
Are we sure?
Well, I'll double-check, but I met with Matt, your assessor.
Okay.
And the finance person Rebecca, we pulled all the properties. So obviously, it's, we would double, triple check that just to make sure.
That would be my question too, because we had three major property improvements and we've never, I don't remember having three major property improvements in a year in a long time. So I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Because at this, at this point, what, aside from there'd be no benefit to, I mean, to rush into this if the base value's the same. I mean, I mean, given, it's complicated. I mean, we're, my head's spinning listening to you. And we've been, we've been, TIFs have been floating in our periphery for a while. So unless you can sell, unless you can sell me on why we need, what, what is the benefit?
Well, the benefit is a couple of larger developments that already put their harder cash in there. Wouldn't be able to get
Hang on one second.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, it may be beneficial last month.
I'm speaking in the back of the classroom.
Kate, it might be beneficial. I mean, what
No, I, the reason to rush it would, would be if the value was different.
Yeah.
So we can capture the value.
Sure.
But if the value is lower, then there, then there's no reason to rush it.
Yeah.
Right.
But it does, I, we, I do think it needs to happen, you know, so
So definitely this year, because that'll give us an extra tool if we apply for other grants. The other thing that probably answered your question, Cindy, when I met, looked at the numbers and talked with, with Matt Caldwell, is I picked some of the projects. I said, well, let's look at Sarge's, let's look at Aquasoc, let's look at Firbush, let's look at some of the products that we've seen happen. And one of the difference between looking at map 37 Lot 4 and 89A and, and your project. And I looked at the values cranked up, I'm going to read these, but not say which one's which. So, but for example, one project was thirty thousand, one hundred dollars plus a hundred forty, five hundred. And the rate went up to one seventy, and then the new value's going to shoot up to four hundred and thirty thousand, which is a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase as of four, one, as of April 1st. So for this one particular project, if we missed going after the 2018, then they wouldn't be able to capture some of that. If they went to the 2019 or the June meeting, because it's after April 1st, then they would be out about thirty-five or about a third of their investments. So they would still be able to offset that spike of two hundred and sixty thousand. That's one case in point. And the other one went up two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in value, and then the other one was two hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred. So they're all very similar. So these were great investments, but they weren't, you know, the five hundred dollars or million dollar investments, but they were still real investments here. What happened, I think, when I saw the numbers were almost the same, was it actually dipped slightly by ninety-five grand? I realized, talked to the assessor, that there were some other depreciations. So which is why I work with Tom Lilis on codes. That's why you see hand-to-hand piggybacking with TIF is you have a blighted thing, you don't want to say that too loud, but the blighted area. And I think that's what brought some of those things down so that you had a net depreciation of ninety-five thousand. Does that sort of clarify that?
Yep, yeah.
Hold on. Question, Ethna?
Nope.
Are you good now? Hang on. Mark? I gotta go in order, Kate.
No, that's okay.
Yep.
In this process, a few folks, when you choose someone, is, do they just go to work and bring you the finished product? Or is it something they come and give you a presentation periodically and get input from new folks from the public and that type of?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mark, I can address that. Yeah, there's going to be a lot of public input. There'll be at least two public meetings. There'll probably be an agenda I have in a select board meeting, and then there'll be the mandatory TIF public hearing. So there's going to be at least two. Sometimes we do three. And they'll do the presentation, explain everything, and it'll be well advertised to meet the, all the advertising postings. Some will need 10-day notice, some need a 30-day notice and so forth. So there'll be a lot of room for that, because the last thing you need is to have it piled on at the last minute and people don't understand it and shoot it down.
Which I would think would
That's where we're going to go.
Be nice for an argument to have it at the regular June meeting than try to do it in March. You know, you've got all those steps and you're looking for input and answering questions and
Thank you, Kate.
That would be my concern.
It, so what we're asking, the vote is for to accept the TIF district to go to the state, like we said, no, what is the vote for?
The consultant, so the legal consultant, the TIF legal consultant.
But that decision you're making now?
That's what he's requesting of us tonight, is to choose.
Yeah.
But the June, the March 30th or the June 1st, it has to go to a town meeting?
That would be for the To accept the TIF district.
Right, so all of these meetings have to happen in between now and that?
After there's a work of myself and a consultant working together. Yeah.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify.
That's a good question to ask though, because it can be confusing.
Cindy?
I forgot.
Okay. Okay. So just for clarification point, tonight, he's brought two. Let me just read to you here. Please see the attached TIF proposal for Rangeley from Alyssa Tibbetts and Shanna Cook Mueller. Is that how you say her name? Mueller?
Yes, yes. And then there should be one from Freddie Flaherty too.
Along with the TIF timeline for Ms. Tibbetts, I have worked with both legal firms regarding TIF, knowing the reality that TIF legal work costs. It ranges from fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars. Based on his TIF experience, Darryl's TIF experience, I am doing a lot of the TIF development plan legwork to keep the legal costs for the town down. Second paragraph, I recommend the town contract with Alyssa Tibbetts of Jensen Baird Gardner and Henry Law Firm with a not-to-exceed cost of 10 grand. With a realistic contingency not to exceed $2,000. So essentially, we could be looking at 12, $12,000, but maybe not. This is the best budget scenario for the town to get TIF work completed and filed with the state of Maine DECD by March of 2020. And the next proposal, excuse me?
That could be for June if you so decided.
Correct. The next proposal is from Freddie Flaherty. Give me a second. From Kristin Collins. Again, thank you for, so on and so, yada, yada. We are happy to propose a rate of $200 an hour represents, incidentally, back to Alyssa's, there's a significant breakdown here for us. I know it's not available to you all right now, but gives us a breakdown of their hourly rate as well as their paralegal rates and, and other folks be doing work with that. Back to Freddie Flaherty. Legal fees for this project would be in the range of nine to 13,000. Work on this project would be conducted primarily by Emily White with support and oversight by our town attorney, Steve Langsdorf, and also Christine, Kristin Collins. I spoke with Darryl earlier about this and, you know, and again, he stated, as you all heard, he's happy to work with both. So the question now before the board of selectmen is, A, are we going to go TIF right now and choose a law firm? Or are we suggesting something different? Yes?
In order, in order to move forward, we have to choose a law firm.
Yeah.
To give the, to give the citizens of town of Rangeley the ability to vote yes or no on the TIF districts, this is a necessary expense.
Right, in order to get that process going.
In order to get, get that going.
And that's why this was provided as a sample, just to show that it is a process, but
Right. Right.
While my colleagues are reviewing this and thinking it over, we have been provided and that will be made available to anybody who wants to look at it. Maps from Wright Pierce that do, talk about the study area for both Aquasoc and downtown Rangeley. And then there are some TIF lines drawn out in one of our maps here. And Darryl did state, because I had run up a number of questions to him earlier about we missed this spot and that spot and so on. So those lines can be changed. And I believe you also stated that they also could be changed at a later date, should we find some inadequacy.
Just submit a TIF amendment.
Okay. All right. So any other questions regarding TIF? Yes, John?
I think to ask you earlier, how many total parcels are there?
Oh.
You repeat that? I couldn't hear you.
How many total parcels?
How many total parcels are included in the district?
Yep.
Of course. You know what? I didn't, I haven't.
It sounds like seventy-four million.
Yeah.
Out of five, over 500 million total for the town.
Yeah.
I'm wondering how many parcels are included?
I can't count them while you're chatting.
Ballpark it.
Yeah, let's see.
I won't quote you in the paper, just guess.
Oh, my Lord. All right, we have
There's more than 50 per page there.
Yeah. Five, six. It's got to be over 300 anyway. I could give you the exact number, I just got to
Yep.
Take it from the matrix here.
Yes, Trish?
Is there a reason that the industrial park area isn't included as a TIF?
That's one of the things we're looking at because it's not officially in the downtown. But they have, when you have an industrial area, common development or workforce to create jobs, that's one of the things that could be tied into the downtown. Same way with other developments that's going out that way. So that's something that will be looked at putting in. And either it'll pass the straight face test where they let us do it as part of the downtown TIF. Or we have to demand that to do a site-specific TIF that's tethered to downtown. That's, because that's one of the hot items for me is when I looked at, there's not much to do light industry here, there's not much dedicated land in the zoning to allow that. And that isn't, could be a happening place.
Good. Mark?
Would, would that apply to commercial too? At the last meeting when they first voted up, I was curious about the industrial commercial, because I thought
Yeah.
Just if you think it's the downtown area, you weren't really diversifying the economy very much. We'd have better potential to diversify it if you included the industrial and
Yeah, there are some industrial areas outside the downtown district. In fact, the, the TIF legislation just changed a couple of years ago. Bear with me, there's so many. So for example, for a commercial alteration, expansion, infrastructure that can go to commercial, that's something you have, you can crank something up. There's no three-phase power, there's no this, but you need the commercial infrastructure for this new building that's coming up, it's going to create 30 jobs. It's allowable outside of the downtown TIF if, to the extent required, due to improvement activities within the district. So you can tether outward a little bit?
Thank you.
Because I don't like having it limited, but based on steps to a goal, the downtown TIF is the most encompassing one because then you're covering 300-plus properties. But then that doesn't mean you can't look at all of the other areas outside of the downtown district. That's one of the things that when they have transit tips and they're allowing additional things for transportation, that can help some with the bonding for roads and stuff. Because you need those roads to connect into the downtown. So these are some of the things that could help the community's infrastructure, capital improvements plans, your CIPs to offset some of that and not have to do as much borrowing. Because you could do it against your local TIF without having to pay the interest. So there, there's a lot of benefits. The big thing is to crank it up so that we could build up the increment. So instead of having a year like 74 or 5 goes down 95,000, well, how about we're 82 or 85? And then next thing you know, you're capturing 100 million, you've got some money, you can really do some great things with it. Because the good thing of every TIF dollar that's spent, it's local, lowers your county taxes and your school funding formula. But it's not just like, here's a dollar investment. There's always a return, even at minimum, three to one, sometimes eight to one. Because you, because of it, private investment's going to come up more. And then certain grants, you have a match to be able to bring in these grants without so many restrictions because you have that matching funds piece.
Yep. Tom?
Just a quick question on the mapping, Darryl.
Yeah.
I didn't see a legend, and I draw out some of those Aquasoc maps. I was just wondering, you've got the red outline, then you've got a darkened area too. What is the difference between that? Is that
Yeah, I talked with Stephen about that. We have what we call the downtown study area, which encompasses more than the downtown TIF district. Because some of those don't pass the straight face test because the TIF district usually is a central corridor in your business district. But usually it's a little more linear than just the Main Street. You go X number of blocks deep. And that's why some of those other areas, it still isn't a downtown study area because it sort of shades into the downtown.
But not in the TIF.
But not in the, the TIF district. We've gone through this before in other communities that I've worked at. We tried to ask for more than what was the straight face test with the state. And they said, nobody else can get that back. The downtown is downtown. But for purposes of townwide, that's why I think they adjusted the TIF language that allows you to do some projects that tie into downtown, outside of downtown district.
Thank you, Darryl. Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the selection of Alyssa Tibbetts of Jensen Baird Gardner and Henry Law Firm for the TIF legal work.
Thank you. I need a second.
Second?
Any more discussion? So let me weigh in. I'm a pretty loyal fellow. I like supporting people who've been loyal to the town of Rangeley for a long time. And I don't see a whole lot of difference in value. I recognize Darryl's initial. Pardon me for coughing up. Hang around grandchildren, this is what you get.
Oh, no.
Which I don't mind having. I can't believe it. But again, loyalty for me is very important. However, I do recognize the cost of the town, but that's just my thoughts.
I just respect Darryl's experience over the years and, and this is, this is something we have never done before. And, and it's, has the potential to be a tight timeline depending on how things, how things proceed. So I just really feel comfortable deferring to Darryl's initial, his comments and suggestions, given his experience.
Thank you. Anything else? All in favor? Thank you. All right, folks.
Thank you, folks. Well, let the fun begin. We'll crank up some more economic activity here, offset some of these costs.
I appreciate all that you've done. Thank you.
Thanks, too. Thanks, Dave. We appreciate it.
Sorry, I was just asking, this, this in no way is rushing to that March date, correct?
No.
No.
Okay. Just making sure, because I think that's
Thank you.
Loading up the wagons, going down into June.
Yep.
Perfect.
I would recommend that the two of you have a conversation with Darryl because I saw a lot of concerned looks on your face.
It's not at all what we've discussed at a
Oh, well, you see, that's, back of the classroom stuff Oh, well, you see, that's, back of the classroom stuff again. Kate, what am I gonna do with you?
I know, just, it's just on the evaluation, because we didn't have that information.
That's correct.
We made, we made an assumption that we were going to be at least a million dollars more in evaluation and we didn't want to miss the opportunity.
Yeah.
So that's why we were confused.
That was a surprise to me too.
Because we were pushing Daryl to push for March.
Right.
So that's, I'm sorry, my bad.
Well, and that would have been extremely wise. I mean, that, I mean, if, why wouldn't we want to capture it if the tree existed? I think we all.
Yeah, that was a surprise to me too, when I got the latest conversation.
Really? Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Next is new business, and we don't have anything on the new business.
Cool.
Let's move to the town managers' report. You have your department head updates. Let's see, I've got something written here, I can't read. Who's supposed to go in above? Department head updates? No, okay, never mind, I'll just disregard that. Calendar, January eighth, special town meeting, eight to eight, which is Wednesday. Please, 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 oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, no, it's on that, I don't, I don't see a notice on the website for this, for the special town meeting.
I saw that.
I, I popped on today, because I wanted to, I wanted to copy it onto, you know, the Facebook, you know, information groups, because this is.
Yeah, looking at something else.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are other notices, but not this town meeting.
Anything else? Next up is, we're gonna schedule some budget meetings.
I'm just leaving that on there.
Oh, yeah.
On the agenda, just so we can touch base on it every time, it's not that I have anything on my slate, it's just a.
I'd, I'd like to at least get one date down, if we could, so we could get everybody together to point us in the right direction as to who can make it. I know everybody has to go to their catalog calendars and watches and whatnot, phones.
I think we usually waited until John had, John needs to meet with his, department has.
It's happening tomorrow.
Yeah.
This is a concentrated effort by the chairman of the board to go. It's time to push and get meetings so that we know where. So if you know we have a date coming up, you'll have yours all done.
Yeah.
Because last year, I remember, I was a little bit late, I don't wanna be. Screamed at.
Who, me?
Oh, me? No, say it isn't so.
Well, we have, we have a half a year of spendages, so that's helpful to see where we.
That's right, you do.
Get through the half a year, so, and they're looking at, you know.
So Mark, if you could lean to the right just a little bit, so I could see. You don't need to move, I just wanna see January. So what, can we, our next meeting is?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, can we be ready for something on the following week, the twenty-eighth, the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth? All right. Is that gonna push everybody too hard, or? You good with that?
Sure, so we'll set a date at our next selectmen's meeting?
No, I'm gonna set a date right tonight, the twenty-eighth, which is a Tuesday. Is that a bad night for everybody, or should we go Monday?
Tuesday's good for me, Monday's bad for me.
Say again?
Tuesday's good, Monday's bad for me.
Say, how about you?
No, I think Tuesday's fine for me.
Dave?
Sure.
Trish? Tuesday good for you?
No, but that's usually fine, I'll get it figured out.
Well?
No, that's okay.
Don't tell me.
No, I'll get it figured out.
All right, Tracy, John? The twenty-eighth, January. So that's, that's the number one meet, first meeting for us.
So do we want the budget committee present as well, so they hear the initial, the initial information?
Yes.
Because that's a basketball night.
Oh, that's right.
Say again?
It's a basketball night.
We had it scheduled for the twenty-seventh at one point in time, that's how it is on the budget calendar itself that you.
Twenty-seventh is fine then, as long as it.
It's been, well, twenty-seven?
We had one selectman that said Mondays are a bad night, so.
No, no, it's, um.
That particular Monday.
The twenty?
But he has basketball.
Let me ask it to you this way. If we did it on Monday night and we did it at four o'clock, would that be better for you? Or is later in the evening better?
I'll be out of town, is the, is the issue.
Okay, well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand.
You good with twenty-eight, uh, excuse me?
Seven.
Twenty-seven? Dave?
Yep.
I am as well.
All right. You better with Monday night, Trish?
Yes.
Super, John, you all set?
Lots of D.
What time?
Back here.
What time?
Five, six o'clock, I don't care.
Let's make it earlier, yeah, that's.
Five?
Five is good.
Five, we'll go two hours, and then we're done.
Good. So the budget committee is there?
Budget committee is there.
And that's closed meeting, that's just us and you?
Uh, now, anytime the board of selectmen meet, it's an open meeting.
Okay.
Yep, yep. But it'll be with us and thank you for your service. Seriously, appreciate it.
I'm here because of Ethna's article.
Well, they are.
If I didn't read that, I wouldn't have known.
Good job.
If I read that and I heeded her suggestion, gotten involved.
Well, thank you to the two of you for serving and your article. All righty, whole business, Sandy River Decrease, yes?
Calendar, quarterly meeting?
Yeah.
January fifteenth at six o'clock. Fifteen. Here, yes.
Did I schedule right?
Strongly suggested that.
January fifteenth.
See, I, I gotta start doing, doing what they're doing.
What time's six o'clock?
Look at my friggin' calendar.
Come on, you gotta get with it.
I know, I know. You are right. Well. We good? Next, anything else? Next up.
We're good with that quarterly meeting?
Yeah.
We're good with it. You're gonna have more fun than a barrel of monkeys, because I won't be here. Sorry.
So should we reach out and see if what are the, what the plantations want on the agenda, aside from?
I've asked for suggestions, so haven't gotten too much back yet.
Okay.
But I, probably that presentation could have gone on to that meeting.
Sorry about that.
It, it was supposed to be a brief update. That was what the phone call.
Yeah, I know, but I felt it was pretty important material and a lot of people have been working pretty hard on it, so there were enough people here to get the information out, so. All right, can we move to Sandy River?
Thank you for the letter.
See what happens.
We'll see what happens.
Yeah. We have information too regarding solar legislation. Incidentally, we are, and we have invited all of the presenters for solar power that we've had in the past to come to our next meeting. We have only one that has responded up to this point. I wanna get Steve a call, see if he, since you reached out to him before.
Do you want me just to give him a shout?
Yeah, please. Any questions on the legislation from? Okay. Town expense report, you've got that in front of you, we, get that.
Yeah, we have.
Any concerns on your part?
No, I haven't gone too, uh, deep.
In the past, we've had percentages on that final.
Final sheet?
The final, there's a last column that indicates the percentage being spent. But, you know, maybe that, maybe that's just not, maybe that's just not capable. Maybe there were the system upgrade, it just wasn't able to be done.
Well, it's, uh.
That was on my budget earlier, John?
Just on your highway budget earlier.
So it's capable to be in that, that is what you're saying?
Well, we have, uh. About fifty percent? The last sheet, uh. You can do it on your head, but budget was eighty-eight million, two fifty-four thousand. We spent to date, uh, four million, two ninety-four. Took in a hundred and seventy-two thousand in credits. We have an unexpendable balance of four million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, so it's pretty close to fifty percent. We're at fifty percent of the year. Make sure when we get the, the budget sheets are different, because they have preparates.
Yeah, which is nice.
Yeah, make sure that's, yeah, possible, try to get percentage.
Well, always, yeah, it, I, I think in the past, yeah, it's not, not on our, not in our budget binders, but it's when we've been handed out quarterly expense reports, it's, the percentages have been there, it just saves time. You just see if there are any trouble spots that may. It may, it may be just because of the software is different, yeah, it's, yeah.
It's maybe the software, but it also came the printer, which has.
Yeah.
Maybe that's.
Yeah, it's just, just a suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Selectman Communications. Ethan?
I'm just, um.
Cindy?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Dave? Need a motion to move into executive session, please?
Need a motion to enter an executive session, MRRA, at one, chapter thirteen, so it's chapter one, so section four, five, six.
Second.
Thank you. Thanks, folks.
Have a good night, everybody.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
It's had three hundred and eighty-five problems, give or take two.
Thanks.
Thanks, Daryl.
We need a vote.
Oh, all in favor? Shoot, what's the matter with you? Getting a little excited?